Good evening, everybody. Glad to see all these faces. We're gonna have some fun tonight, and you should have been here Monday night. We had a lot of fun Monday night. And we'll have fun again. If I could, I'd like to start the meeting now tonight with invocation by Jim Billingsley, and he is with the Loganville Badges Church, right across the street. Come on up, Jim. Make sure the green light's on that mic.
It's on, yes. Good, good job. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come in prayer praising you as our Creator. You are sovereign, you are just, you are gracious and merciful. We thank you for this community of Loganville. We thank you for the citizens, the city employees, the first responders, and this council, all of which you help to make this a great place to live, work, play, and worship. We are also thankful for this country founded on freedom, liberty, and justice for all. Father, we pray that we will all work together in unity, humility, and grace for the betterment of our community. We pray for wisdom for this council. Help us to remember that we are all neighbors. Remind us of your greatest commandment, to love you with all our heart, mind, and soul, and to love our neighbors as ourself. And Father, we ask all this in Christ's holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Jim. We'd like to have Jeff Smith come up and join, Jim, as they lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, guys, I'm only indulge myself just for a second because we got some of our younger generation here with us. Hold on. I just try to keep in mind the young folks that are hearing this meeting tonight are the future of our country, and we like to recognize them whenever we can. So thank you, guys, for being here. We appreciate it. Okay, roll call. Everyone is in place, so we are set to go. Need a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
Well, before we do, Mayor?
Okay.
I would like to bring the police up before we get started tonight. They have a presentation for this to make, and I'd like to do that so we can get these guys back out of here and back on the roads.
That's fine. Come on up. That's great. Isn't it great to see all these officers? And just so the young ones understand this, keep in mind when you see the police, it's not always blue lights behind you when you are speeding or run a stop sign. They're there to help you when needs, when time of need comes. So glad to have everybody with us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for letting us go ahead. We got a good number of these officers are actually on duty right now.
Yes, sir.
We're gonna try to get them back out.
Not a problem.
As you know, we do an annual 5K run to raise money for Walton County Special Olympics. We held our run back in September. We started this in 2012, but we lost a couple of years during the COVID, so this was our 11th annual run. We were very happy with the way it has progressed. We had over 300 runners this year. We've never had anything close to that. We thank the council members, the mayor, that come out and support us every year. Councilman Whitfield runs it every year. He looks far better tonight than he does when he crosses the finish line, but he does very well.
Well, let's be fair.
And we appreciate that.
Let's be fair, Dick. His wife runs it. Brandon walks behind.
I don't, I would just say she got to the finish line before he.
She did.
But we do appreciate everybody's support, particularly the support from our community. Not counting what we raised this year, going back to 2012, we're a little over $140,000 total that we've been able to contribute. And last year was the biggest year that we, we had ever had. And I want to just very briefly acknowledge all of these folks take part in it, whether it's blocking roads and helping us lay out the race routes. Getting 300 runners registered in less than an hour is quite a task. Soren Kitchens and Jessica kind of took it away from me and have done wonderful things with it the last couple of years since they've been doing it. I've really grown our run, and I sincerely appreciate that. And they would tell you the first thing every time they say, hey, we want to do this, like, all right, how much is that gonna cost? Because in my mind, whatever it costs is less I can give them. So they're very frugal with the things they do and put in a lot of extra time with it. But we didn't do quite as good as we did last year. Last year, we raised a little over $22,000, biggest year we ever had. But I'm very happy to be able to present to them this year a check for $21,558.96. So thank y'all.
Fantastic.
Amanda, make sure they can see you, Amanda. Thank you.
Hey, Ron, when are you gonna start winning again?
I have no idea.
I know. That young man is a runner, I want to tell you. A good man. Thanks, everybody. Kim, are you planning on having a spaghetti dinner again this year? February?
February 7.
Okay. Good. Well, I guess a few people wanted to stay with us, I guess, maybe. Have a good evening. Okay, with that small change on timing, could we have a motion to adopt the agenda? Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? The agenda passes 6-0. Okay, if you'll notice on your printout for this meeting, you'll see a consent agenda. Believe it or not, those items that you see on the consent agenda was agreed upon by everybody on the council, and that's wonderful. And that takes some of the time away from tonight because we usually fight on Monday, then we vote on Thursday. So those were all agreed upon, and with that said, they are all approved. And we'll move now to Plan Development Committee, Lisa Newberry.
We need to adopt the consent agenda.
He did a second, I think. We voted on it.
Oh, the consent, oh, my bad. I didn't do it.
We voted on the agenda.
We voted on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
All right, can we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So move.
Have a second? Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? You guys won't have to worry about my mess-ups too much longer. But anyway, now we'll move to Plan and Development, Lisa Newberry.
Thank you. We have one item for Planning and Development tonight. It's item number 3A on the agenda. And Mr. Mayor, in the matter of case number V25-018, known as Tuck Farm, I make the motion to deny.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye. All right, all in favor, is that everybody?
No.
Okay, that's what I thought. All right, everybody in favor, please show a sign of your hand, of hands.
In favor of denial.
Yes. One.
Two, three.
Four. And those that say no is two. So denial passes 4 to 2. Okay?
And that is all we have.
Okay. All right, and now we'll move to Finance, Human Resource Committee, Anne Hunsinger.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say something. I'm going, I'm leaving here. You know, I've got two meetings left. I've been joking all night about two. We have got to stop, as a council, having meetings with people and them spending money and then changing the vote up here. It's not right. There was a meeting held where changes were made before things were brought, and they were told that if they made those changes, there would be support, and then up here, it changes, and that is just not right.
Which part isn't right? Part that where they're making agreements?
To commit that you, it's, we've done this to multiple people where we say, if you would just make this change, or if you make this a little bit different, or if you do townhouses, or you don't do town, whatever the conditions that are discussed prior to the vote. And people jump through hoops to make those changes, and then they still don't get, they still don't vote. Like, if, if I say to somebody, I, I really like what's going on, but I would really like for there to be a dog park, just for an example, and then they put a dog park in, and then I say, yeah, I'm still not for it. It's dishonest. Do you know how much money these people spend? Like, how much money it costs an attorney to write this stuff up, to get the motions, to come up here? And I, I mean, maybe we shouldn't care, but, but in the Tuck Farm thing, this is also citizens that are on the other side of it. Where are they? I, I just, I'm just absolutely disgusted. Okay, that's my rant.
I think in this case, just from what I've heard, many of the council want to see the site plan when this comes back again. Can they bring this back up again, Paul? When they do the site plan, maybe in December?
Bring what back?
The variance, this variance with it.
No.
No, we just didn't.
To the year?
Yes.
Well, where I'm at, Anne, and I hear what you're saying, is I'm tired of developers coming to Loganville and playing spin the wheel. They don't do their due diligence before they ever get here. This could have all been avoided had they done their due diligence in the beginning.
And Melanie, I mean, this may shock people. I have no issue with you. I mean, I, here's one thing I can count on with you. If you say you're gonna vote a certain way, I, you'll vote that way. You don't pull any punches, and, and I appreciate that about you, even though we're sometimes on different sides of things. I appreciate that about you. I'm, I'm talking about other stuff, so I, I, anyway, it's, it's a moot point. Danny, we added these two items to my Finance Committee report. We have to talk the audit extension, which you sent out a text about. Can you talk about the amendments on the fiscal year new, you or Natalie, please?
Guess Natalie's gonna do it.
You didn't jump on it, so I figured you wanted me to. So the preliminary draft shows that we need to amend the general fund IT budget because we now have to book large leases, large equipment, like small equipment, but large amount, yes. So because our threshold's 20,000, our copier lease goes over that, so we're now having to book that. So because we haven't before, there's no budget for it. We've got to amend it. It does make that budget go negative when we amend it. We need to do it for 630.25, so we've got to do it before they finish the audit. The other one, the hotel motel, is because, under the proposal from the auditor, they request that we spend all the money in hotel motel for economic and event tourism stuff. Just spend it all towards pretty much everything Christie does in advertising to bring people to our events. So it will zero out that budget for the year. So since we didn't budget for $60,000, it puts it in a negative.
So if I make a motion that we do the required budget amendments for fiscal year 2025, is that specific enough?
I'm, I'm sorry. I missed what you.
Paul or Danny, is that specific enough, specific enough?
Can you say it one more time?
If I make a motion that we approve the necessary required budget amendments for 2025?
As.
As presented.
As presented? Okay, I make a motion that we accept the audit required budget amendments as presented for fiscal year 2025?
May I ask a quick question?
Of course, I'm so sorry, Todd.
Oh, no, no, no. Can you give me the dollar figures, Natalie, for both of those?
She asked for the dollar, dollar figures. For the general fund, it's gonna be $54,596.
$54,000?
$596.
$596, okay.
And the hotel motel is 68, 935, and 59 cents.
Thank you. Okay, Anne, I'm sorry.
Will you second me? Will you second?
Yeah.
Okay. She seconds.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Passes 6-0, basically housekeeping.
Okay, the other thing I have, we have to have a discussion briefly about a request to file a state audit extension. This has to do with some government shutdown things, some timeline changes, et cetera. Has nothing to do with anything on our side of this, of this audit business. Do you want to, Danny or Natalie, do you guys want to kind of talk about that? I know we talked about it in text.
So this is for the ARPA fund, and we had, you know, anything over 750,000 threshold requires a single federal audit. This audit was tied to the general audit for the general fund. The way they presented it is together. If we can separate it, but that's gonna cost more money because it's part of the city's audit. They did tell us we could separate it and send just a city's audit, and then once the government decides they're gonna go back to work, they would present the federal audit, but after talking with our auditors, they said just do an extension, it's simpler. Saves us time, saves you money, so.
We like saving money.
We do.
So do you need a motion that we approve the audit extension?
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
No, hang on, that's, that's just a.
Yeah, we're requesting to file an extension.
Okay, so I make a motion that we request that we grant them the right to file an audit extension for this. Is that okay?
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Okay, passes 6-0, and that's basically tied to the government shutdown.
Yes, the audit, the draft audit's pretty much done, even the federal audit. Just, they're not accepting any audits from the federal government this time due to the shutdown. And after speaking with the Department of Audit last week, they didn't have a timeline. The federal audit is due, I think she said, nine months after the fiscal year ends. So we, we may be there, we may not. We don't know yet.
That's fine. Okay, very good. Anything else, Anne?
No, sir, thank you. That's all I have.
Move now to Public Safety Committee, Melanie Long.
Thank you, Mayor. We did the Special Olympics early, so that wasn't on mine, but I do want to recognize we have four police officers that have their workaversary. Lieutenant Terry Haymore's been with the city for 27 years. Tina Harmon, 15 years. Brooke Pennington, two years, and Crystal Centron, one year. So I thank all of them for their service to our city. And then the other thing was, is we heard from Fire Chief Johnson today. The fire department was awarded the Walton Healthcare Foundation Grant Award, and that allowed them to buy two more of the Lucas devices, which are the devices that do the CPR. And so I think that's pretty, both of those, all of that is pretty incredible, that we have such a great team of public servants. So thank y'all for that, and that's all I have.
And saving lives, there's nothing wrong with that. Okay? Public Utilities Transportation, Bill Duvall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I had no actionable items. I will say that I attended a, what we, what we call a transportation summit. It's a collection of the industry that I'm in, met in Athens, like we do it this year annually. And it's a good, good opportunity to talk with a lot of different people. There's a few things that was interesting. One was the Commissioner, Commissioner DOT spoke at the general session, and she kind of showed a graph of where prices have increased. He showed three different consumer price indexes and how they changed over year, over, you know, I mean, over, I don't know, couldn't, kind of hard to see what, how many years, but I would, I would say it's 10 or 20 years. And it's been fairly, you know, it, it's an increase, obviously, the Consumer Price Index, but what was interesting is they, on top of that, they showed a, an index, an index from DOTs around the country and what they've seen, and it's, and it's like two separate graphs, whereas it's, it's almost like the construction cost has just gone up, would double. I mean, it's just hu, huge rate. So, you know, that's just kind of just what's happening and needs to, needs to level out. It was interesting. Also met with the people that are, that are involved with our, our project, our 20 project downtown. You know, kind of got some reassurances that, you know, they're still moving forward. They're still looking, you know, there's hurdles to go. There's, there's work to be done. But it is, it is good to be from, at least from that, that relationship that they're still working toward it. But that's, that's all I have.
Okay, very good, Bill. Now we move to Public Works Facilities, Patty Wolf.
I don't have anything this evening, Skip, except to say that the Main Street looks so nice with the little Christmas trees. And I imagine Public Works, Jeremy and team, did that, so I want to thank them for that because it really looks nice as you look down the street.
Getting to be that time, time of year.
Yes, it is. That's it. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Economic Development Committee, Brandon Whitfield.
Thank you, Skip. We had our Economic and Development meeting Monday night, and out of that, we talked, talked about writing a visioning synopsis to send to the DDA. I got it sent into Danny yesterday. I sent it out to our, to the committee members yesterday as well, but we didn't get it in the packet, so I would like to read it real quick. But this is how it reads. It's 254 Main Street Redevelopment Vision, Vision Synopsis. The city, and please excuse me, I know we said it was gonna be a paragraph, but I must be training to be a lawyer or something because it got very long. But the city of Loganville's primary objective is to rede, is the redevelopment of 254 Main Street is to achieve a thoughtful, thought, a thoughtfully designed infill redevelopment project on that, on the property and that injects excitement into our downtown core and promotes prosperity, prosperity for generations to come at 254 Main Street. We envision a site plan and building design that is cohesive, incorporates quality building materials, and reflects the small-town feel of the surrounding downtown district. Ultimately, we aspire to create a development that feels timeless, seamlessly integrates with the surrounding area, and stands the test of time. The City Council and Downtown Development Authority of City of Loganville are supportive of increasing the number of Main Street business fronts on the Main Street frontage of the lot, and are particularly enthusiastic about the prospect of adding a restaurant space with outdoor seating to the downtown core. The city also wants to prioritize public parking accessibility for those visiting Main Street. While housing components are not currently a priority, the council is open to innovative designs that enhance the viability of Main Street businesses through the incorporation of loss and businesses above retail, detached housing such as larger homes with an ADU component, which is accessory dwelling unit, or cottage homes consistent with the style of other historic residential properties in the area. Preserving, preserving some of the old growth pecan trees within the site plant is an additional benefit for the community that the city wishes to accomplish as feasible. The city welcomes design proposals for the lot at 254 Main Street and is receptive to incorporating the lot at 4436 Pecan Street into the project as well if the overall vision and plan meets with the long-term goals envisioned of the revitalization of the downtown core of the city of Loganville. And if y'all are okay with this, we can get this to Paul. Do we need to take a vote on this? I guess we should, just to be safe. Vote this in so we can go in and get Paul this, so he can work on the IGA to get it to the DDA. I don't know if that will be done by their next meeting, but he'll be able to start working on it. Any questions?
Is that a motion?
So how, how will this work? I mean, we've got, so we have this vision, and what happens?
So with this, this is what we give to the DDA so they can go out and solicit offers. They want to, you know, for a loose term, they're gonna put it for sales on the land, but this will be what they're giving to people that are asking about the land. So people, they know what to go attract or what to go get. Believe their understanding or what their fears was, if they went out and found something and it wasn't for the city's liking, we wouldn't approve it, so they don't want to waste the time. Am I correct in that, Skip?
Yeah, they wanted some direction, and they didn't want to go out and bring something that obviously was not going to be even considered, so yes.
So this points them in a better direction with this, with the IGA that Paul will write up. That should clear up that issue so they can go ahead and start moving on 254 Main Street. Street.
Will the IGA, Brandon, release the property as well? It's owned.
My guess would be no, Paul can correct me if I'm wrong, please do. We keep the property in our name until they find somebody. A lot of times with the DDAs or any development authorities, even with the Loganville Development Authority, it was, we transfer the land after a lot of the dealings are done, so then, it's just a pass-through.
Okay.
So they don't really have to hold the property to do everything, because we might need to, you know, re-change some zoning, or put some conditions on the land or something like that. So it's easier just to keep it in our name until we can get all that squared away and then release the land over.
Okay.
Is that correct, Paul?
Yeah, that's correct. Y'all would retain ownership until it ultimately transfers to whoever the end user or developer is.
And many times, it happens at closing.
It would happen at closing.
Yeah, okay. Okay, everybody okay with it?
Any more questions, I'll make a motion that we accept this vision synopsis for 254 Main Street.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that passes six zero.
All right, Ann, someone told me before the meeting about a train, talked to you about a train?
Yeah.
You want to talk about that?
A while back, our American Legion found out that they did not have insurance on the old 40 and 8 train locomotive that they've had for years, and then when they found out what the insurance was going to cost, they decided to allow the city to take that over. The plan is, as of this day, that locomotive will be running in the Christmas parade. So that's our goal. I think, Danny, we got insurance covered, or we're working on it. And they have been working on it since then. They had this starter that wouldn't work, and they had to send it to Germany to get it fixed, all new brake lines, all new fuel lines. I'm hoping we're putting cameras in it, because it used to take two people to drive it, one to drive it and one to see out of it where to drive it. So maybe the cameras would make that a little bit easier. But that is the locomotive on the screen, and it's really a, a historical monument to our city, it's been around here for a long time.
I remember seeing it in parades when I was a kid. So I'm glad to see it back in action.
And I think we've got a couple of the old gentlemen at the American Legion's going to ride in it with our city crew. One of them is Jack Wade, and he struggles to walk these days, but he said he'd be there. And he used to be with Bobby Boss, and the two of them drove it.
Very fitting.
So, and they took it all over the place. So it's exciting times.
All right, Christie, you want to talk about events real quick, before I turn it back over to the mayor?
Hello, good evening, everyone. Our Christmas parade and tree lighting is on Saturday, November the 29th, it's the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and as Skip said, we do have this lovely train joining us this year, so we're really excited about that. They were over there, there's just, this afternoon actually decorating it for the parade, so we're excited. So the night of the parade starts at 6, it'll go down Main Street. Once the parade ends, then Santa will get off, come on the town green, and we will light the tree, take pictures with Santa, and then Jake Rager will have a concert for a couple hours after that, so please come join us.
And we need to mention Jake Crager?
Rager.
Rager. He is, he's mostly gospel, but he has agreed to put some Christmas songs in with his list of songs to do for everybody, and some gospel. So it's been a while since we've had gospel singing around here. We tried it one time with Loganville United, and by the time they said they sung the first word, the weather hit, and everybody headed for the cover. It was a tough storm that night. Okay, with that said, City Manager's report, Danny?
Thank you, Mayor. Just FYI for you all, I talked to three of the four new elected officials, and we will be swearing in the newly appointed or elected officials on December 11th council meeting. That will be at the beginning of the meeting. Judge Kidd, municipal court judge, will be here swear everyone in. I still got to talk to Wes, I thought maybe he would be here, but he's not, but I'll let him know, so please come, however you want to be dressed for your pictures to be taken. He'll be here, and we're going to do that first, first of the meeting, and then if we was to have to have a meeting before the January council meeting, the new council will take after December 31st.
Correct.
Okay.
So the council will stay the same until December 31st, and then the new council, January 1, would take over, if there was need for a called meeting.
And the December meeting is on December 11th.
I believe that's correct.
Second Thursday.
And that'll be a combined.
And we will not have a work session that month.
That'll be a combined meeting, so if you come Monday, you'll be here by yourself.
Yes. I think we can handle that.
He's going to show you one more picture of the train. City managers have better pictures than the mayors, so if we can get it to work.
That was Christie's picture. I get blamed for everything.
No, I didn't like the other picture, so I had a new one sent.
Now, what's this?
He's trying to get it to work.
I thought that's going to be a funny train.
So I got to keep talking until Mike gets it up, because Kyle would already had it by now, I think.
Oh, Mike can do one. You're good, Mike. Don't let the pressure throw you. We've only got 10 million people watching over YouTube.
And today's Christie Asher's birthday, even though she's not here because she's a quitter, today's her birthday, so I'm sure she'll watch this. I call her a quitter, so I can do that. So if you got her phone, just tell her happy birthday, she turned 25 today.
Yeah.
You want to get, pull it up for me?
I wish.
25. 28 years of service, and she's 25.
She's always been a, she's always been a dreamer.
It's going to be so worth it.
I hope it like moves and makes noise and all that after we sit here.
The suspense is going to kill you because it's the same picture. I just want to make some jokes.
No, she's going to say it. It better be good.
I got faith in Mike.
There we go.
Very good.
That was a very good picture.
That is a nice picture.
It does look better.
Yeah, I was worried about that paint, it's been sitting in our lot for a while.
Yep, that's all Ross Burrell and his staff, been working on that train, it's been a nightmare from what I hear, but they've got it operating, so.
A nightmare, we call that a passion project.
Yeah, that's the Mayor Bilal's special project.
Absolutely. And they've been practicing driving it, so we shall see.
Yes.
It is.
Well, it has horns, I don't know if that's just decoration, but yes, it's a, if you've never heard of this train, bring earplugs.
They work. The question is, we can't put the train behind any horses, because the horn will scare the horses.
It's going to go behind the mayor, so when he talks, the horn getting horned.
Doesn't bother me at all.
Okay, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much, that looks great.
Paul has nothing either.
City Attorney's updates? Paul Rosenthal, who probably is going to be in the parade this year, aren't you, Paul?
Be happy to, but.
Oh, God, that's good.
I have no actual items for you this evening.
What do y'all think about somebody building a little enclosure that looks like a jail cell and put our attorney in it? That'd be good, wouldn't it?
Whatever you need, Mayor.
Whatever you need, all right, that means he ain't going to show up, but anyway. Okay, we do not have executive session tonight, so it's that point of time, and December will be my last meeting, and we'll be making some changes after that, so that's a good thing. So we need a motion to adjourn, which is always the toughest part of these meetings. Oh, we got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, adjournment approved, six zero. Have a great evening, and by the way, before we go, we may or may not see you again before Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving.